Run that away.
Yep.
Wanda, you should see what Tom rolled in there. After he found out you made your own.
That's right.
Just remember you're on camera, Tom.
It doesn't matter.
It doesn't matter.
You should know that by now, Wanda.
I figured someone should do it for you. You shouldn't have to do your own.
There might have been a method behind that madness.
It's the difference between five and ten years.
You get to do your own certificate.
I did my own for five, too, but I'm not if I'm going to hold.
Well, it's seven o'clock. I'm also calling the meeting to order. Unfortunately, Will's not here tonight. He's had to work tonight, so. Any additions to the agenda? Okay, hearing none. Somebody wish the agendas. Richard. Any discussion on Richard's motion? Hearing none. I'll call the question of favor. Opposed. Seeing none is carried. Analysis. Okay, the council meeting minutes of September twenty-third. Any errors, questions, questions? If not, Barbara moves in. Any discussion on Barbara's motion? Hearing none. Call the question of favor. Opposed. Seeing none is carried. Okay, moving on to employee recognition. This is a great time that we have as a council to recognize our long-term employees. We have two tonight, so I'll call Wanda first.
You don't should go first.
Oh, no, she go first. Oh, I don't know. Wanda was started with us in two thousand and fourteen, so she's got ten years as she started off as the front desk unit clerk. Wanda took on a position as utility clerk in two thousand and twenty-one, and she works three-quarters time, but, you know, when you come in and you see her smiley face, you kind of wonder if she's not here more often than than just three-quarters time. But she did make out her own recognition award, her certificate, and I'm not going to read which. But anyway, no, Wanda's been with us, and, you know, it's been such a great asset to have you here in our community and on our staff. And thank you very much. On behalf of council, we thank you for all of your years of expertise.
You said we're careful.
We talked about it earlier, that they were having some IT problems, and Wanda was the lucky one to get to deal with the IT people today, so. And the second one is McGill. He's been with us for five years, and he started off as a laborer with Public Works, and then he moved into an operator, too. And thank you very much for all your years. Most of you probably don't see him around as much as we see him in the fall, especially, you know, driving the, um, street sweeper and picking up all the beeps. But anyway, well, thank you very much for all the years.
Thank you so much.
If it wasn't for our employees, you know, we'd be in bad shape, and so we really deeply appreciate. And it's nice to see guys like you that have started and worked your way up through the system, and hopefully you'll be here for years to come. And same with Wanda, you know, starting off and being prepared to change your career a little bit, but yet, you know, one day you might be down in the money hole fixing the water line, and the next day you get to drive around in that big fancy white street sweeper going down the road. But anyway, thank you, and we really appreciate all the times and nights for two guys. Thank you to both of you, and like I said, if it wasn't for our employees, we'd be in bad shape. So again, thank you. You can stay if you like, or you can go.
Thanks, McGill.
Thanks. Same with you, Wanda. If you want to stay, you're welcome.
I'm gonna catch this one.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, now we'll move on to our next item, which is traffic coming requests from Robert Shear. So, who is yours again, Tom?
Yeah, I won't take up much of your time. I dropped off some specs and stuff for these things. And if you approve getting three of them, it'll cost you twenty-six hundred and sixteen dollars.
Yeah, Kim did forward the information to us, so we did have it.
Okay, so I'm hoping that we can do that and try that and see if it helps. Beyond that, on the ad hoc committee motion, I'd like to, I'd like that one, too, because I'd like to see them consider looking into making Cottonwood Drive a continuation thirty, thirty K. It's playground zone at the east end, right? Thirty K, a lot of the subdivision is thirty K in there, and if you would think about continuing that along the Cottonwood Drive, that might help. But that's something the ad hoc committee can look at down the road. I'm certainly hoping you guys will approve this speed hump, because I think it will work. Traffic is getting more and more. I know there wasn't a lot at the start, but that was four years ago, so. Anyway, I'll leave it with you. Any questions?
Any questions for Barbara?
Is that, that was in American dollars, wasn't it? But I saw the American sign.
I don't know, I don't think so.
So I just wanted just to verify.
Beaver one was in Canadian dollars.
That one was Canadian.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
I did look at them all.
Good. Good. Okay.
Okay, one thing, it's on the agenda farther in. Was there any other questions? No? Okay, thank you. Okay, now we have a presentation from Rowan House Society. Yes, you can have center stage.
Help yourself to water.
Krista will explain this at the end of our presentation. It's that time of night, my glasses have to go on top of my head. Hello, everyone, and thank you so much for having us here today. My name is Lynette Sullivan, and I'm the executive director. This is Krista Hoover, and she's a program lead for the Community Engagement Program. Today, domestic violence and abuse are at epidemic levels. Rates of police-reported intimate partner violence and abuse experienced in rural area is seventy-five percent higher than urban areas. On average, every two point five days, one woman or girl is killed in Canada. Abuse comes in many forms, such as intimidation, threats, control, financial, cultural and spiritual, medical, stalking and harassing. It is important to tackle the unfair assumptions, stigma and shame that have attached to domestic violence and abuse for far too long. By supporting us in our endeavors to erase domestic violence and abuse, you're helping the communities we serve. We're here today to provide a short update on some of the supports we have available for the residents of Vulcan and how we can support you to make a difference for the people in your life who've been affected by domestic violence and abuse, or perhaps the constituents you may come across in your work. Our symbol is the rowan tree, commonly known as mountain ash. You may ask, why is a rowan tree our symbol? The berries often retained through the winter on the rowan tree symbolize endurance of life through the dark of the year, and the tree itself was said to afford protection to the dwelling by which it grew. The rowan tree has traditionally been associated with peace, sanctuary, privacy and beauty. The rowan tree embodies and symbolizes what we at Rowan House stand for, that every person is safe and secure and lives without violence and abuse. We are super proud that we also have a couple of rowan trees in our emergency shelter outside in our yard. Rowan House Society serves the second-largest geographic area in the province with a total population of over a hundred thousand individuals. The area served our foothills county, the MD of Willow Creek and Vulcan County. At Rowan House Society, we provide a continuum of trauma-informed programs and services to help break the cycle of domestic violence and abuse in our communities by providing crisis intervention, long-term support and preventative education and awareness. We have seven core programs. First, our twenty-four-hour support line provides telephone and texting response to all individuals seeking crisis support, information or navigation to the programs or supports that best suit their needs. The twenty-four-hour support line is available in multiple languages through CanTalk. For the April first, two thousand and twenty-three to March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four fiscal year, we responded to two thousand two hundred and ninety-four calls and texts, which was a fifteen percent increase over the previous year. Secondly, our emergency shelter, which is a short-term thirty-day safe for women with or without children. The emergency shelter has seven bedrooms with the capacity to support twenty-four individuals. Last fiscal year, we supported two hundred and twenty women and children, which was the same as the previous fiscal year. Children are remarkably perceptive. Their eyes observe, their ears listen, and their minds process the messages they absorb. If they see us patiently providing a happy atmosphere, they will imitate that attitude for the rest of their lives. Children learn how to treat others by observing how their environment that surrounds them treats others. We have a specialized children's program that not only allows children to just be kids again, but trains staff to provide them with tools for understanding their own big emotions and strategies for coping and healing. Last fiscal year, we provided two thousand three hundred and ninety-eight hours of programming to children. The fourth program is the preventative education program, which strives to break the cycle of abuse by providing healthy relationships groups for women and education and awareness for youth in schools, as well as presentations to the public. We are pleased to offer lunch and learn workshops to anyone who is interested. In the last fiscal year, we provided one hundred and twenty-five presentations to six thousand two hundred and thirty students, which was a twenty-five percent increase to students over the previous year. The fifth program is the outreach program, which is designed to address and meet the needs of all individuals, regardless of race, cultural or spiritual background, gender identity or sexual orientation, through one-to-one contact and support in a community setting. Last fiscal year, we supported a hundred and five individuals through the outreach program, which was a two percent increase from the previous year. We also indirectly impacted an additional one hundred and fifteen children through the outreach program. The sixth program is the court support program, which offers information and support to clients by developing a better understanding of family law matters and protection orders while ensuring individuals are provided with wraparound support. Last fiscal year, we supported eighty-four individuals and assisted sixty-three court orders. The last program, which was just introduced to Rowan House Society this year, is the Safe at Home program, which is designed to be an alternative approach to helping families experiencing domestic violence and abuse. The Safe at Home outreach worker provides support to the individual that is causing harm by providing one-to-one support, group sessions and an option to access a cool-down approach. We are pleased to have a data analyst who ensures data integrity and that all our work is truly having the impact we hope and expect. We have a shelter facility and safety advisor dedicated to enhancing the safety of all our staff members, our clients, as well as the community. All these programs are accessible and offered at no cost, thanks to the wonderful generosity of the community such as Vulcan. We do receive an annual grant from the government, but it's restricted to specific programs. It is important to advise that we haven't received an increase in funding in a decade, and also that's operational and wage. However, this year, the government of Alberta provided some funding for preventative education as well as the Safe at Home program. So we were super pleased about that. I have everything else we must fundraise through grants and donations. Our focus really is on collaborating with the community. Since January of this year, we have attended or hosted thirty-four events. Our third annual golf tournament raised a record-setting forty-eight thousand dollars, and we just wrapped up our twelfth annual music event, Rhythms for Rowan House. We've also formed many partnerships where we continue to work collaboratively to benefit all members of our community. Through these events and partnerships, we hope to increase awareness in the community so that everyone who needs support knows where to find it. We are pleased to advise Rowan House Society will be honoring and commemorating our twenty-five-year history in serving the communities of foothills county, Vulcan county and the MD of Willow Creek in January of two thousand and twenty-five. So very important question, how do we support the Vulcan area? Last fiscal year, we provided a hundred and five students' school presentations in the Vulcan area. We are super excited that we're going to be offering our first healthy relationship group in the Vulcan area on April first, and it will go from April first until May sixth, two thousand and twenty-five. And on our whole basis, we'll continue to have on our annual basis, Vulcan as part of the process. So I just wanted to let everybody know that, so we'll make sure that flyers and everything are passed on to town council. Two thousand and twenty-four has been significant to Rowan House Society as we entered a new chapter by implementing our three-year strategic plan with a renewed focus on helping to serve even more individuals impacted by domestic violence and abuse in our communities. At Rowan House, we will not stand by and leave individuals to face violence and abuse alone. Our hearts, our clients will continue to be the heart of everything we do as we continue to improve our client service delivery processes and systems and the access and ease of access to our clients to the different services that we provide. Every endeavor we take will be to develop new partnerships and build stronger alliances to further enhance our client service delivery. Our goal is to ensure we continue to reach individuals within our service delivery area. We know that everyone's path to addressing domestic violence and abuse and their life looks different, which is why we have so many options for help and why we're hoping, we're working to raise awareness about all those different options. Our hope is that from today's presentation, you have a little bit more of an understanding about how to refer anybody who is experiencing domestic violence and abuse if they do trust to share that with you. We would like to end with a quote by Nelson Mandela. "We owe our children, the most vulnerable citizens in any society, a life free of violence and fear." Thank you for helping us shine a light on domestic violence and abuse in our communities. And with that, we have a special gift. This is lanterns for hope, and this was made by a child in shelter. Light unites people and brings feelings of warmth and belonging. It shines in the deepest darkness and shows truth. The truth we want to bring forth is that relationships are not a place for violence. Everyone deserves to feel safe emotionally, physically and financially. This lantern is a symbol of hope and a reminder that the ability to shine light on darkness is available to each of us. The lantern was created in our playroom. May it remind you of light eliminating darkness. There are two ways of spreading light, to be the candle or the mirror that reflects it. And that was beautifully written by children's programs as they were working with the children in the children's program.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions? We appreciate you guys taking the time to come and share with us. You know, we've, some of us have heard the presentations in the past, and I think most of us don't appreciate what goes on out there in the world and appreciate what you guys are able to do for the little funding you have. We understand that, you know, unfortunately, there's only so many dollars to go around, and it's getting tougher and tougher for each group to decide how they can afford to move forward. But we appreciate what you guys do for the citizens of our province, although not the citizens of our communities. So thank you very much. Anything else from any?
May I ask a question?
Sure.
So we are hoping to continue to increase our presence within your community. I was wondering if there's any specific events or anything like that that you would like to see us have a presence at?
That's a good question. I'm not sure. I mean, I don't want to just totally look at Barbara and Judy, but both of Judy sits on SCSS and Barbara's on our adult, I mean, our.
Are you looking for kids and adults, both?
Yeah.
Whichever you think would be beneficial for the community.
Yeah, and again, I'm not sure. I mean, I think no matter what we can do to get the word out that there is an organization not that far away that, you know, lends support to this.
I do know that you guys come to Interagency quite frequently, and so maybe make mention of that because quite often we have a lot of different events that are going on. Everything from like, sometimes we're collaborating with like Aper Health and Elder Abuse, the Vulcan Regional Response to Elder Abuse Temple.
Names to change, hopefully this year.
And because we work with Claire's Home, too, and Gabrielle, you know, and then, of course, we both were on the victim services board, but that's kind of all changed. But quite often, there's lots of community events that I think that you could possibly come to and advocate for Rowan House and get more people to understand what I think domestic abuse actually is, not what it's perceived to be. And I think that, like, I will talk with some of my other groups that I work with, and when we host different events, we will give you a call.
Okay.
Yeah, you probably know Don Weisman, our executive director for SCSS and Food Bank. If not, I will have to reach out. Do you have a card? And I'll have to reach out because we do have a lot coming out this fall.
Really? That would be great. We would love to be able to support in the different areas, love.
Thank you.
Okay. If you get through Krista, you'll get through me. That's great. Thank you very much.
We'll get something set up.
Great. Well, thank you very much, Gamely, for taking the time to come over, and thank you for, you know, and your staff. Like I was saying earlier, you know, unfortunately, if it wasn't for our staff supporting us, we wouldn't know what to do and how to do it, I guess, sometimes. So, you know, relay that on to your staff, that we appreciate all the stuff that goes on in your organization and you're sharing your organization with, like I said, SCSS and elder abuse groups and some of the other ones in our communities. And it's deeply appreciated. It's, you know, the only time somebody says anything good is when you're dead.
You don't have to worry about that.
We can relay it on to you now before, you know, but we do, we really do appreciate what you guys do, so.
It's amazing. Thank you. I will say one thing with the preventative education program and the stuff that Krista had talked about, about how many students we reached the last fiscal year, that is the two only preventative education facilitators. And they do community presentations, they go to the schools, but they also do the healthy relationship groups, so they are busy. And so we're, sometimes we don't talk about how many staff are actually in that program and how many, like, when you look at the stats overarching. And same thing with the court program, it's probably two years at the end of December that we've had that program, so fairly new. That's with one person. So I just, I think we don't sometimes talk about that, like you were saying about the staff and the magnitude of the support that they're providing by one or two people in the program. So it's pretty magnificent, and like you said, we're really happy. We're gonna leave you. The saying about the lantern is hell.
Okay, well, thank you.
From the council ground, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And I will offer you, if you want to stay, to the end, but if you'd like to leave.
But thank you for your time. We really do appreciate it and look forward to seeing everybody in the community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you for all our delegations. Now we'll move on to our correspondence. MLA Hunter's report. Like I've said in the past, he's one of the ones that does a great job of writing a bit of a report. I mean, it is, it is semi-slanted because it comes from the government, but I mean, as an MLA, but he presents this at mayor's interviews, so is there any questions or go ahead, Judy?
I was just, because I was reading about the Habitat for Humanity, and I was just wondering if that would be maybe a fit for Vulcanville?
Yeah, and we can reach out to you.
For their vulnerability part, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know. I mean, it's a different, I've never had much to do with it. I donated to their, their sales side of, you know, where they raise funds, but I have never been involved in their, their construction side.
I have, but it's quite amazing.
Imagine.
And you work hard, so you're there.
Yeah. Because, you know, they do ask for sweat equity, and I think that'd be, like you said, kind of neat to see how it could work or grow from there. But it's definitely something we could look into, too, and try and share that information.
Just to talk.
Yeah. Okay, anything else on grants? Okay, if not, we'll move on to the Old River, Old Man River Watershed Council, where we see this every fall because they're soliciting funds for their year to come. And years ago, the Town of Vulcan was part of this group, and because we only have two minor contributors that poured moisture into this old man watershed, we felt that, you know, it wasn't something that we would have much to say. Or they do a lot of neat programs out there and partnerships, but it's mainly on the Old Man River itself.
We had Paul Taylor actively participate on board, and he, after a few years, he gave back with the recommendation that Vulcan didn't really contribute enough to buy keeping active, so we haven't been active for a few years now.
I mean, they do kind of still keep us on their radar because of, you know, our small amount of moisture that we put into it. But, but anyway, there is their letter of requests. Any comments or questions on that one? Okay, if not, we want to go Old Man River Regional Services Commission. And Kim shared that with us so that you could, you know, when we talk about home occupations and, you know, this is great for, to be shared with the MPC, too. And our members that sit on MPC, because it's kind of interesting to see how some of it comes home to roost pretty close to all of us.
And we got a mention of that one.
Oh, yeah. So is there any comments or questions on this one here at all? And again, you know, administration gets us stuff a lot, and sometimes it's, you know, stuff that you kind of read through and you go, oh, it has nothing to do with us, but I appreciate them, you know, sharing it with us and so on. Okay, then the last one is the letter to the Vulcan District Waste Commission, and they, I guess, CC'd it to all of the members of the Waste Commission and their concern of trying to keep the cost down.
The one thing I noticed in that was, you know, like, I mean, basically, they're saying that we don't like what you're doing, we're leaving, and, you know.
Well, I don't take it as that.
You don't take it as that, or you take it?
No, no, I think we've got some major concerns that, you know, the Waste Commission could sign something that's going to affect them. And being that, you know, I mean, they pay on the per capita base, the same as everybody else does, and, but, you know, so their numbers are, look huge compared to anybody else's, but, you know, if it wasn't for the other contributors, too. And it's not as easy, I think, for some groups to think that they can get out of the Waste Authority. You have to buy your way out. That's the problem with the commission. Sometimes it's, you know, the first paragraph usually in a commission talks about how you get out, usually. And usually there's, you know, a huge financial obligation because the provincial government put in a lot of funds, and you have to buy your way out. So I don't think that the county is interested in getting out of the Waste Authority. I think all they're just doing is saying is that, you know, they would like a first opportunity to review it and send it to their, you know, team of lawyers so that they can, you know, make sure that there's an out clause to get out of the agreement. It doesn't tie the Waste Commission to a long-term agreement type thing that doesn't have some outs that would be, have been vetted by. Go ahead.
Them being the biggest, say, client, if they were to leave, there would be real hardship on the rest, would?
Not necessarily. It depends on how, how they get out and what they do with their waste. You know, when they leave, you know, where are they going to have their residents, the ratepayers, take their waste to? Because the land and all the facilities are owned by the commission. They're not owned by any municipality, so they're owned by the commission as a whole. So for them to say, you know, their council of the day saying we'd like to get out, then they'd have to figure out how, what they're going to do with the wasted.
And they couldn't make their own waste?
Oh, you got that. There's nothing stopping anybody from, you know, wanting, potentially saying that we'd like to, instead of hauling our waste from the Town of Vulcan, we're going to send it somewhere else. That would be a choice that we would make, but it'd be at the expense of our ratepayers, too.
Yeah, yeah. I was just reading it, it's kind of like we're talking, you know, a soft, I think it's, it's like a soft commitment. and then they're talking everything to be reviewed through their council, their legal council, which I understand is probably proven. But it's just kind of, the way it's written is, you know, interesting, shall we say.
It is. It is very interesting. But, I mean, again, too, you know, I mean, if, if the county is willing to take on the expense of sending it to their team of lawyers and on behalf of this, the Waste Authority, I mean, why would the rest of us agree? I think that that'd be a great thing. Because, again, you know, they do use one lawyer that we use and, but they also have another couple of lawyers that they do send their information to to be, make sure that it's vetted and vetted in eyes. But again, you know, like, most people that have ever been involved with anything with lawyers, you know, there's a difference in interpretation between what one lawyer believes or doesn't believe. And until you go to the court system, then that's when they, you know, you realize that one lawyer's opinion wasn't quite as strong as the other one's could have been or was. So, but anyway, I don't, I don't perceive anything in here other than letting every, all the municipalities know what our intentions are. But the only concern I might have is what this could do to, potentially to the other commission that we set together and a foundation that we set on together. Is everything going to be, need to be scrutinized the same way? Which, you know, could tie up time and, and resources. If everything needs to be scrutinized by the foundation or committee or the, or the Waste Authority or the authority, and then it gets, has to be scrutinized by each individual municipality which has representation at the table. So, that would be my concern. But again, I don't, I don't, I think that there's advantages and disadvantages to the latter. Okay, any questions on any of those four items? If not, somebody wish to file Richard? Any discussion on Richard's motion? Hearing none, we'll call a question on the paper. Posed, seeing none, it's carried.
Thank you. Moving on to the Speed Calming Device Committee request. So, as you can read by the information that was sent out by Kim, there was two requests made. If we approve one, it kind of circumvents the other. If we approve the second, it circumvices, circumvents the first, in my opinion and administration's opinion. So, I think we heard tonight a different slant on something that wasn't even discussed at the last three times that Bob, or Mr. Shear has been here. And so, go ahead.
Sorry, I just, I question the Speed Calming Device Committee request. A couple of things. Is this just gonna be, to me, it just sounds like it's just gonna be speed? And is it just gonna be for the area that Mr. Shear is, has brought his concerns through? Because we have several, we have several intersections in town. I walk around at like five and five-thirty in the morning through several different intersections and the majority of people, I would say, don't even stop. So, I, if we're gonna do an ad hoc committee, I don't think it should be just, in my opinion, a Speed Calming Device Committee. I think we need to look at all of our, we're doing UEs in front of the post office, at the playground. We had a lady in here, I'm not sure if it was this term or the last term, but had a concern about speeding through the pool area. And I have concerns with people speeding to the ballpark. I, I think it's more than just, it's a lot bigger than just, I, I wouldn't feel comfortable just concentrating on cottonwood driving.
Yeah, go ahead, Paul.
I think if an ad hoc committee is formed, and in his actual letter, it said to work alongside the public bylaw or RCMP determined for their actions to be considered. You know, for, and I think that it should be considered for the community as a whole, not just one particular area. I, I think that him bringing, bringing his concerns about his area is, you know, very important to him. But I think that also there's other areas within town that could possibly, you know, you know, if a committee is formed, they could work with bylaw or the RCMP and administration to see what kind of solutions could be determined. Or we could go with the kind of just taking care of that and moving forward.
Yeah, I think you're right. I think there's, there's an opportunity here to, to look at traffic concerns throughout our municipality. Like Lyle has said that, you know, it was earlier this year that we had the request on Main Street. But in the past, like you had said, there is, you know, a request to put a four-way stop at a couple of locations. There's pros and cons to all of them. And, and, and the philosophy of creating a potential ad hoc committee has great benefits. I personally question whether we just leave it up to, you know, three counselors. I'm not trying to pick on those three that wouldn't bring that information back. But being that, you know, a year from now, we're going to have a new council and potentially, it's going to take a period of time to gleam all this information. And, you know, we've all have sat at, at a meeting at the, at the hundred-foot hall and listened, had a letter that, you know, said that, you know, we need, we should make our decisions based on data and information than on, than on a request made by, you know, somebody that's out of, out of their personal concerns type thing. Not to say that there isn't more, there's thirty-seven homes that are on Cottonwood and there's fifteen homes west of Cottonwood right at the moment. And a potential that we could get a twenty-unit facility that might look at, you know, low-cost housing potentially in that area. You know, we've got requests to alter the direction of that road from being straight or being from what is being proposed, was originally proposed to have a curve in it to being straightened. Maybe this is more than what the request of Mr. Shear is, is to take a look at the whole gamut. You know, do we look at parking? Do we look at, you know, off-street parkings? And, and, you know, MPC has, you know, might have concerns or questions that need to be brought forward. And, you know, so is there other ratepayers up in that area or homeowners or whatever that live in that area that have other concerns, you know, farther down? Like he said, tonight, there was a request made that we, we look at thirty throughout that whole area. We haven't got the data back on how forty is working in the area yet, you know. So, again, I'm not opposed to any of this. I'm just saying that there's some advantages and disadvantages. And we could do a, without spending much money, and do a calming hump, which according to this is three and a half inches, three point seven five inches high, by sending a grader up there and Stu can make a hump or a dip. And on the gravel, it's one of our only areas in town that, other than alleys, that is gravel on a major collector. We could put in two relatively inexpensively right away to alleviate some of the concerns of the ratepayers on, on Cottonwood. While we're, and not, and while we're doing, potentially creating a committee or a committee of the whole, is what I would recommend, is a committee of the whole, of looking at what Lyle has said, all our areas in the community and expand it. But, you know, the area of concern from, from ratepayers and in other areas of our community and, and look at all of them and put it out there. And, but it's gonna take time. It's gonna take time to, to have a public hearing or a public meeting again and, you know, if it's been as well attended as our last ones, you know. Or, or whether this is gonna be a burr when somebody's bonded. But anyway, go ahead, Paul.
I'd say over the past couple of months, I've had a lot, I shouldn't say a lot, but probably four or five parents, I recall them, approached me about this topic. They're usually discussing their own neighborhood and their concerns with it. And a lot of the feedback has been, well, if you guys go in this direction, I'm gonna be sending requests as well. Which isn't to say that
That's bad.
that Bob doesn't have an issue with this street. Because I, I've driven it if I was a teenager, not that I ever ripped around in high school or anything. But it'd be probably a place where I could see kids would do it. I still think it circles back to enforcement's gotta be, I'm not gonna say better, but enforcement's still the biggest deterrent, in my opinion. But the cost of this could be outrageous if we give in to one or four or five because there's other areas within town that are problematic too. So, I, we're in kind of a tight spot here. This ad hoc committee, I personally don't have any interest in being on it just because of my time restrictions. I would not be a good member to be on it. That's not to say I'm against having one, but I kind of like your philosophy of the council as a whole discussing it.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, to do a full circle with that conversation, that was the, what started the forty kilometer an hour change to bylaw was concerns from the residents being brought to bylaw and RCMPO, brought to council for discussion. And that dated back to two councils. So, that motion was made to councils. And it took us that long to get it in place and it's only been in place for a few months now. So, giving that opportunity for it to see how it's working around town works along this. To Tom's point about data collection, those sort of things. We had a brief discussion about including in the budget, possibly more of the signs that can collect that data and actually help. So, putting a committee together can, can do that, but it still needs time to collect that data. You're, you're, you're gonna be long-term into that.
I think if we, if we were to form a committee of the whole, I like the, the idea of whole, would we be able to, in the meantime, do like what you had on the screen there? With the, the two pumps in the meantime? And then start to get some of the data so we can make decisions moving forward based on actual data?
Right. So, with that, that's why that conversation came up because it was a suggestion that was something that could be done fairly cost-effectively. I talked to Public Works about it as far as actually building it, taking the grader out, building it. You know, it could possibly cost us a little bit of gravel, although we could have that on hand. And again, doesn't cause issues with store, the local sort of thing. So, for those that haven't seen it, they were talking about the gravel section from here to here, possibly just putting in two pumps and then putting signs up. He wasn't sure this morning, when he checked, he was gonna check, we don't have bump signs. But he, he extended that he could probably get some from the county for a short term and that replaced them so we could get them fairly quickly and inexpensively. This is a solution to specifically Mr. Shear's request. So, it would be just addressing that. And based on that, you know, if, through this proposal, his request was for two very specific motions, as you saw, they contradict each other. If you're buying stuff, you've eliminated the reason for having that committee specifically to look at that area. That's why when I rewrote those motions, tried to put them together so that they made proper sense for procedural. And that was to, you know, appoint whoever that happens to be, whether it be ad hoc or committee of whole, to review speed calming solutions on residential roads within the town. Not, and then directing administration to include funding in the 2025 operating budget to accommodate any recommendations. We may not have to do that if, if council would like to address specifically this one request and then look at it as a whole. That's what you pay us for, is to bring this data forward for you. So, you may not have to have a committee at all.
Richard, have a comment?
I just, without enough data from the forty, like, I think the forty, we have to see what that's done to make a difference before we start thinking about thirty or. And I agree with what Cole says because if we put one, then everybody and their dogs that thinks they need one is gonna come asking. And like, I drive around town lots and majority of what I see are, they're doing a speed limit or a little under, you know, there's, there's some that are a point or two over. But I watch in the morning, Sander Street in front of my houses, I, I watch that. Went from a bunch going fast to one or two. And I mean, it's, it seems to me that I'm looking at what I'm doing my own personal kind of pull. It seems to me that the forty is having some impact. But I'd sure like to see the data on it because then you've got some data to make a true decision. And I, I just, I, I think the idea of just doing the gravel for now is that. And I wonder, the kids say, I can't do it here, where are they going next? You know, that's the next thing, you know, and then you'll be hearing about that. So.
The thing, the thing too about doing some data collecting too and speaking to our MPC, which, you know, is, looks at, you know, the potential housing that's gonna be going up in that area and dealing with that and our, you know, potential road realignment in that area too. Is that something that's, information that would be, you know, pertinent and important to making a proper decision for that? And then also too, you know, we have to really look at what roads do we believe are collector roads? You know, which ones are, which ones are gonna be our haul roads, you know? You know, we get lots of complaints and concerns on 534, which isn't in our jurisdiction. But yet, you know, the signage on it is very, very hard to understand, even for most of us that live in the community, where one begins and where one ends. And I, I think the council of the days have, you know, changed things. They went from school zones to playground zones so that we can, you know, govern some of them. Like I said, a request made tonight of extending that playground zone for another four, four blocks. You know, could be a potential answer, but again, it's enforcement. But, but, cool.
Well, I think a lot of people, especially who are affected by speeders, they need to realize one thing, is no matter what enforcement does or what bylaws we change, there's always gonna be one idiot out there who just does not care. And that's all it takes. And I think in this situation, having talked to Bob about it, it's kind of what got this ball rolling, was one idiot ripping through there and caused this whole thing. So, like, we can do, doesn't matter what we do. Once in a while, there's always gonna be an idiot out there that drives like an asshole. Sorry for my, but, and there's nothing we can do to prevent that.
So, I mean, you know, going back to, do we want to form a committee? Or do we want to just, you know, allow the community of the whole to, and ask administration to start collecting information? You know, we can, we've got, like I said, you know, between MPC, the police, the bylaw, our, our previous, we've got two with the Vulcan County police officers that have had experience working in our municipality. And they might wanna have, you know, we might wanna ask them for some philosophy or input on, on. And again, like Lyle said, do we wanna look at our whole community? Do we wanna, you know, go back even, go into our, our parking and our off-street parking? And, and, I mean, you know, MPC does, deals with the request always for, you know, relaxation in off-street parking potentially for, for home occupancies and whichever. And, and, you know, do we need to sit down and spend a half a day or a day as a group and, and beat this whole thing up? Not just the one block or, well, the, the four blocks of Cottonwood if it's completely. But, you know, our, our whole community and say, is there areas where we really need to say, no, this is a collector road and we'd like to keep the traffic flow? Or no? Or no, we want to put calming devices in in other areas or, you know, traffic devices which cause us for for enforcement? So, did you have?
Yeah, I'm just, the more we're talking about it and thinking about it, do, I guess we do, but do we have the power? To regulate, I guess we reduced our speed limit, but we have the power to, I mean, if we wanna say screw it, enough, we're gonna stick a stop sign up on every.
Yes, we do.
Every intersection, everyone's gonna be a four-way.
You betcha.
A four-way stop.
Yeah, and then that might be a a solution other than it takes enforcement. Exactly what you talked about at five o'clock in the morning, there's no enforcement. The person's not going to stop at that stop sign. So um that that's advantage of a stagnant or a um hump or a a speed bump and we all went through it. Cole didn't because he did go to Red Deer, but every time we went back to our hotel, there was a speed bump that we all went over. Every one of us got an opportunity to see a speed bump. Now, and I don't, I don't think it, I think it was higher than two inches up for a speed bump and it's, I think it was even higher than three point seven five for a hump. But I don't know, I mean, I never mentioned.
Personally, I agree with having a a committee of the whole at some point, once the data is collected. And in the meantime, to resolve some possibly these issues and um visits to council chambers. Perhaps we could um have administration talk with um and get the gravel moved in that area um to to hopefully promote some calming through that street. From the west.
Okay, Kim, have a comment, and sorry, Judy.
And uh with that, that would mean amending the motion that's put forward for committee, that sort of thing. I do have a draft that would allow for that if council would like to go in that direction.
And Judy, spell comment first.
Just with it being getting near winter, is that that's gonna be hard to maintain, it's a gravel hump we're looking at putting in, is it? So when the grader goes through, it's not gonna just take that away, this is a bad time of year to kinda test it, is not what I'm seeing.
Being on a gravel road, being that it's gravel, when we're pushing the snow through, we're just floating on top, so. He would, uh Stew would build it so we can go over it, so that we can maintain that.
Go ahead. I should have asked Bob this and maybe he mentioned it previously, but where specifically did he want these placed?
I don't think that's a.
He hasn't brought that forward.
He hasn't brought it forward, that's, but I think where these ones that I'm proposing isn't where.
He wants them.
He wants them, but that does, that's not, that's not up to any resident in this community to decide where we should put it. I think we need to look at the recommendations of a lot of reasons where to put it.
And one of these folks with Public Works, uh this is the two highlighted areas that we we discussed was as you make the corner. Because this is the the round corner and then for people coming this way as well, doing it right at the very end, just two subtle humps that uh and one of the, the only concern that was brought up uh by Public Works is if they put this in the road, will people start driving out on the grass around them? Was his only concern. And that was just on the top one, at the bottom, there isn't enough room to get out on the grass to go around them.
I do like this solution. Because it's cost efficient mainly, but it does serve the exact same purpose as these for data collection, for these others.
And and the other thing too is that what I've been told by other municipalities that have um speed bump hump calming devices is that sometimes there's a huge noise alley problem. And if the residents that live along that are closest to it are affected by the noise, they might say, we don't want this calming device that you guys have put in and it's something that we can eliminate without a huge expense.
I did have not somebody that lives on that specific street, but somebody that was close to that street. Um, say that they do not want bumps there, cause they don't wanna drive over them. And it is, like in my cul-de-sac, my one neighbor piles their driveway with a bombcat and it creates ruts across the road. And I hate it because I bump into my vehicle. Does slow traffic though, I guess, but me personally, I hate it. But um, I don't know, I could understand, like I have that same person says, I don't wanna live in a community with speed bumps. It's awful to drive over.
And and I I think that, you know, the philosophy of trying to do something temporarily, you know, or 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 doing something, you know, has advantage because we can use it to glean information and I appreciate what Judy's saying is moving into the winter months a concern. The previous um. I'm not sure if it was the previous time that Mr. Shear was here, but the one we will ask that question about it and he says it's not a problem in the winter anyway. So I'm not sure, and I I went back to our tape to make sure we heard it right. So it's not sure if the winter is a must or a concern, it's only when it's nice and warm and sunny outside that, you know, creates more of a traffic. But but again, I I think that um, you know, again, M P C and and some of the other ratepayers up in that area there or residents up in that area might have other concerns, like how many people had that direction out of their area? If there was, would that alter their plan of not going west, had east instead or vice versa? And I think there are lots of ratepayers in the community that really would like to see something done. There's there's streets that are, you know, five blocks, six blocks long that haven't got a stop sign on them. You know, to 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 alter them and they've got some beautiful pavement in some of them and um.
And to that point is, that's something that as we move along and that's something that we engage in as we do proposals for council is we engage our engineers. The first time that this proposal was brought forward, we asked our engineer for a recommendation because as Tom said, we have some streets in our community that don't have a s- a stop sign for the entire length, but that's also some of it is out of design. One of the questions that comes up on uh collector roads, those sort of things, is flow of traffic. Now, we're not in a community that has to the point where we need streetlights, things like that, but you also want to have flow of traffic. That's why sometimes a two-way stop on each side of a collector road makes more sense than having a four-way at that intersection causing confusion. And so uh that data driven on because you do have a traffic bylaw that does identify our collector roads and and those sort of things. And Cottonwood Drive currently is a collector road for that subdivision. That is the way for traffic to get out to Main Highway. So.
I would say this, uh the obvious thing about winter is kids are indoor a lot more than are outdoor.
Oh, oh, definitely, you know, I mean, I think all the way around it and that, so I think that we do have time to to collect some information and do some soul searching and that. And I think by Mr. Shear bringing this forward has definitely, you know, opened the eyes of a lot of people. Because like Cole has said, I had a discussion with another ratepayer that lives on an intersection that I sat on his deck the other day and I counted twenty-five vehicles within two minutes by that person's place, twenty-five in two minutes. And I'm sure, like I went up there today and I only sat there for ten minutes, not one vehicle went by. In ten minutes, I appreciate it, it was nine oh five in the morning and um.
Same time? Same time both times?
No, it was nine oh five this morning and I sat there for ten minutes, not one vehicle went by.
But I mean, the other time, what time?
Oh, no, the other time was in, I think it was in the afternoon, I was going to the transfer station today and after, more of the the grass and and so I I went up that way and parked, there was another vehicle parked right across. I thought, well, maybe they were doing the same thing, doing some data collecting, but um it, there was nobody in it.
So for the purposes of the conversation within this report with the two recommended motions, uh if council would like to move forward with more of a data collection approach uh and bringing that back to committee of whole, you don't need a motion to create committee of whole cause it's already there, it's already all council and administration collects that data for you. I did draft a motion that could be, you know, that obviously just being a recommendation, but to cover if you did want to experiment with speed humps on those two uh two locations as Public Works and uh and council has discussed. The motion could be uh put forward that council directs administration to construct two gravel speed humps on the western gravel section of Cottonwood Drive and monitor the effect of these speed humps for traffic calming and report back to council after twelve months. That kinda covers off data collection because it also feeds into the conversations that you've had budget wise about uh moving the signs around, those sort of things, uh possibly uh adding more signs. It gives a chance for the proper collection of data to be brought back to council.
And Barbara, Barbara, sorry, Barbara did mention at the one meeting about maybe we could look into purchasing a couple more signs. And then we could strategically place in different locations and that really brought forward in the budget. So Barbara did bring that up last time, but anyway, Judy, sorry.
So we'd have to buy bump signs?
Yes, but at a cost of a couple hundred dollars.
Each?
Yeah.
Certainly.
Depending, again, we may be able to get from the county or. Uh, probably two, one on each side.
Cause they're close enough together, it's kinda deceiving you.
Yeah, it's.
Not very far.
It's it's not very far, so oncoming traffic, probably one here and then one here.
Could you put one on the five twenty-nine too?
Oh, well, and this is, this very well could open them up to, as as Cole mentioned all over town, so.
Well, and and again, too, you know, I mean, if if we, you know, we have done, you know, had lots and lots of concerns raised on five thirty-four about uh, you know, the traffic that in signage and maybe it's an opportunity for us to again address some of those concerns because it is very hard to figure out what the speed limit should be through those periods of time and 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 spaces and and maybe that's the same thing with, you know, like the City of Leffbridge does. Their their uh playground zone is posted, it's not just allowed, the provincial one, it's posted from, you know, seven in the morning until nine o'clock at night, you know, and it's posted on every playground zone and City Leffridge does not have a a school zone left in there. And uh so, you know, is is signage a concern, you know, I mean, is this something that we need administration to bring more information back? Or do we wanna, you know, like I said, have a half-day um seminar and and sit down with ratepayers and and concerned ratepayers and 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 administration to give them support and direction on what information we need to glean from them, you know? And ask for information or do we, you know? Judy or Barbara?
Perhaps we could have like an open meeting uh for public to come to um to voice their concerns at some point. About their, all of their areas in town, cause I'm sure. And then we could do the committee of the whole perhaps afterwards, cause then we would hopefully have some of the data. And then do the recommendation that as Kim had granted.
Did you wanna answer?
I was going to suggest that uh through open house, you have one for budget every spring. Yeah, this would give this got. This is, this would give a good opportunity, you can put that, we always look for that extra aside of budget, you always put that there, that would be a big place to open it up for feedback.
Yeah, cool. Okay, yeah, no, I mean, and and I I think that Barbara's got a point. I personally, I sometimes like, you know, um when the iron and the fire is still hot, sometimes it's you get more people out that are have concerns or questions on it, but again, you know, we've only had one ratepayer that lives on Cottonwood Drive and there's thirty-seven um houses along that Cottonwood Drive. Not to say that some of the information that was gleaned in the past wasn't shared with some of them, but you know. Cool.
Um, I guess for the sake of moving on, I I think we should try to put those bumps in now and see what happens, so. You do have a motion?
I do, I do, and I can read it if, again, if council would like.
But I would like to say one thing, I do think Vulcan's a safe place for traffic, I think a lot of this is over. But just my opinion.
Go ahead.
So as it's written, uh the council directs administration to construct two gravel speed humps on western gravel section of Cottonwood Drive and to monitor the effect of these speed humps for traffic calming and report back to council after twelve months.
I don't know what the twelve months, but anyway.
This is just an amendment, it's open for however you guys would like to word it.
I I I think if we leave it open so we can bring it back, because.
Report back to council?
Yes.
Let me ask the vision.
But it's your motion, I think.
Yeah, it's both motion as he's.
Their next council can deal with it.
That's why you wanted twelve months.
Uh, you could, you could change that to report back to council after adequate uh data is collected. That sounds good. Would you like me to re-read it?
Sure, please.
Okay, so. Councilor Dunham has brought a motion forward that council directs administration to construct two gravel speed humps on the western gravel section of Cottonwood Drive and to monitor the effect of these humps for traffic calming and report back to council after an adequate, after adequate data has been collected.
Is that okay?
That sounds pretty good.
Any discussion on Cole's motion? Any none, call a question in the favor? Opposed? Oh, there's one opposed. Okay. So did you catch that?
I did.
Okay, thank you. And, okay, thank you very much, thank you, Barbara.
I I did want to, for the reporting person purposes of this, there's probably going to be questions, I will write a letter to to Mr. Shear with with the motion. Uh, the only thing I'm gonna be able to do is have him refer back to this video conversation because of course trying to put all of that information in a letter is going to be really hard and and as you know, we have trouble, he doesn't correspond with me, so.
Okay. All right, thank you very much, we'll move on to the organizational meeting um request.
So as council's aware, in the past, we've always tried to do the organizational meeting right after the council meeting, uh the third or on the fourth uh Monday of uh the month. Will has indicated that he is scheduled for shift that night of that council meeting and is uh understanding the importance of being at the organization meeting, has requested that council consider shifting in for a day, cause he will be off the next day. And uh is willing to make whatever time works for you as council, so.
Judy.
I have a meeting at um at Marcus that night on the twenty-ninth.
Okay, he's willing to do it during the day as well if that works.
Would we be able to do it in the morning of the twenty-ninth, at say nine AM?
Do you guys?
I'm willing to work with everybody that's.
More of the to work.
The ones that have jobs.
Is this the same meeting that we did at uh in County Lush?
No, this is uh, this is just uh the appointment of the mayor. Redoing all of your, reviewing all of your signing authority, all of those things and uh reviewing the procedural bylaw. It really shouldn't take more than an hour, I would think.
Yeah, I'll be free for whatever date works for everybody else.
Okay.
Nine AM on twenty-ninth.
Does that work? Okay, you'll send out a.
I I will, we'll do uh an agenda and send it out and do an invite, go and come on to your calendar.
So do we need a motion to?
Do you, uh, you're actually scheduling meetings, so.
So can I have some, uh, well, like on Judy? If that's what you're making a motion on?
Yes.
Good, thank you, Mark.
That council proves the twenty twenty-four uh Falcon Town Council Organization meeting be held at nine AM on October twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four in the Town Council.
Okay, sounds good. Any question on Judy's motion? Here and now, call a question as a favor. Opposed? Same now, this carried and received. Okay. Okay, moving on to the Vulcan Curling Club uh recurring grant funding request. They've never requested this in the past, but it would come out of the recurring grant fund. And so um Kim has supplied you with the information that was given to them, the criteria and the information that was received. I have one question, in in Fred's letter, it says a coin. Um, I have one question. In, in Fred's letter, it says a coin slash habitant. Is that, you mean co- cohabitant?
No, it's a, that was a spelling mistake.
I was gonna say, cause I, I couldn't, got it on Google. I couldn't find it anywhere. What a coin.
Yes.
I think it was cohabitat.
Yes.
I think, but I'm not sure. I just thought, well, maybe it was something I missed in life and, and was curious what it meant. Anyway, Judy.
I have, I have some concerns. I don't mind helping people out, but the lounge isn't even open. I think it opened today, maybe.
It does today.
And they could be making money. So if they're not gonna try to make money when the Rampage and the Double E Bisons are playing, what, you know, why are they at, why are we giving money when they're missing opportunities to make money? I have a concern with that.
Okay, and we do charge them taxes for the lounge portion. And we, same with, you know, when we, you look back at the re- reoccurring grants, we do one for the Legion. And theirs is based on, um.
The offsets are taxes.
Offsets are taxes. Um, so there is a potential that philosophy where you could say, now, there is another organization in town that gets taxed on their lounge portion of their facility too, that might be coming back and say, what about us? So, go ahead, Judy.
Were, were they not asking to have their, or believe on their taxes? Like, do have us pay for their taxes be?
Go, go ahead.
No, so thi- this is basically how they're asking for that. Is they're gonna be short funding that they used to receive from the, and share with the egg society. So they know that we do recurring grants. From that, they made a request for five thousand dollars and to support that. So at this point, they could have just written a letter asking to be part of the recurring grants. But in order to prepare, I said, here's what, here's what you have to do to be part of the recurring grants. So they provided all of that information for this. Uh, I have looked at, you know, fair and equitable, and that's why I, uh, I looked at the, uh, the Legion as a perfect example. They were a group that struggled with. And so the town in the past, the history behind that was the two hundred, or two thousand dollar recurring grant, covered the taxes, uh, for, for the Legion. And so that was the reason why, that they asked years ago. So one of the things that could be considered in here, I know the Curling Club has asked for the five thousand, but they know that that's just, that's, that's a number that they look for. Uh, if council wanted to look at just doing the taxes, the average tax on that, uh, they, uh, their annual is about seventeen hundred is the average. So a two thousand would be, uh, uh, would be equitable with, say, the Legion.
Yeah.
The other thing that Fred wanted pointed out is in their financial statements, uh, one of the things to consider with their account, uh, with the funds that are in are making sure that everybody's aware that that includes their casino funding that has to last for the three years. So the, the, almost half of their money that they have in the bank right now is casino funding contingent on lasting for the next three years till their next casino, because they just received the funding.
With that thinking in mind and asking for money, they aren't financially liable to make it without any funding. Because if they, if they're using casino funds and that's gonna seem through three years and they're asking for five thousand bucks every year from us, like, they're not financially viable. So I know they have been trying to expand, but Judy made, Judy made a very good point there. Been to the Rampage Games and it was bad and it was locked up. And I mean, and I, I mean, they, the contract apparently was for the fifteen today. And, but I, I mean, that's an oversight as far as I'm concerned. I agree with you a hundred percent on that. Like, I, it's an important piece of our community for sure. But I, I think they still have to, like, I remember sitting on that, um, talking to them. I mean, Palliser uses that for that much money. And, you know, and I said, why aren't you charging Palliser? Well, there'd be just, what's that?
Joint use.
Joint use, yeah. Well.
They use our, uh, pool and, uh, arena for the same.
But I mean, it's still, there's gotta be some contract, some agreements made to rectify some of these situations, I think. But that's just me.
Judy, go ahead.
Um, yeah, cause I, I would rather, like, um, Food Bank is at two thousand. I'd rather it see that five thousand go to Food Bank and the two thousand to Curling Club. My reason for saying that, I was in the Food Bank a week and those shelves are down here there. Like, it's scary.
Yeah.
I know we just went through a long weekend and that, that takes a lot, but Christmas is coming and those shelves are not looking healthy.
Yeah, this is gonna be proposed for next year's budget or?
It will. And really what this is, is, and it's, depending on the request, you have to put that and then we have to.
Cause it has to be in by November first.
For, for next year. So it'd be in next year's budget. And to be completely honest, the, the five thousand dollars with the discussion was, is inside. They looked at that and know, some of their members know that the, uh, that the victim services is winding up. There's five thousand dollars that's available. But essentially doesn't cost the town anything to transfer from one organization to another. Uh, was, and I'm sure that's the, why the request was at the dollar value that it is. Keeping in mind, like Judy said, the two thousand dollars for Food Bank, that was only la- happened last year.
Go ahead, Cole has a story.
Um, this is gonna sound quite negative and it shouldn't. It's not a personal account on anybody, but I have a real issue with some of these membership clubs that are private. That operate and basically cater to their club members.
Yeah.
But also depend on public money so that they can have their private party. It bugs me, cause I think the business model of this curling club is flawed. It hasn't changed in my whole life. And like Richard says, this will, if, the way it's being ran, it will never be economically feasible. They will always ask for our tax dollars.
Yeah.
And that bothers me.
Yeah. Okay.
Um, I'm just gonna say from my perspective, um, I think the, having the curling club in the community is actually important. And the fact that it is part of the joint use and you have elementary school kids, you have junior high, you have high school students that are having the opportunity to learn a sport for free. Um, I think that that is actually kind of cool, because maybe not everybody's a hockey player or a thader skater or a ballerina or whatever. Um, we, I, I think, um, it's something we should look at and maybe have further discussion. I, or can we possibly not make a recommendation this evening and bring this when we have our committee of the whole to discuss the amount?
Yeah, we, we can. I mean, the, the, the timing that was because it had to be in by November first.
Yes.
So it's, it's already in. We don't have to make that decision today. You know, of the amount or if we wanna even go with it, we can just accept this, you know, and move it over to the budget discussions. And administration can play around with some numbers that they can recommend when we do budgeting. Or we can, you know, approve an amount or not approve it at all. I mean, so, I mean, leaves it open to bring it back to, cause the deadline was important, you know, to, for them to be, and they've got all the information for us. I, do they, I, I used to be a curver, but I've been a curver here. What, do they, will they be asking from the county as well?
Couldn't tell you.
I don't know that answer.
It's a good question.
It is a good question. And I, I assume that if they were to approach the county, it would be considered under the recreation side and we look after the recreation.
Well, not necessarily. They could, they could have put it to their rec committee.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
And, and their rec committee could approve it.
Their meeting tonight.
Based on the information that, you know, that, again, I, I mean, unfortunately, you know, the Curling Club has seen some huge numbers increase, had, that they have no control over, and that's the insurance and the utilities. And, and they had one of their partners, um, that had been a partner in the facility since the day that the building was built, changed directions and what they wanna do with their funding. And so it is definitely affected the Curling Club per se as a curling club organization. But, Cole?
To Barb's point, I'm not against giving them money. It's just cause they, there's a benefit to the community there.
Oh, yeah.
I would, I would be in the opinion that whatever their taxes, dollar or amount was, how much was seventeen hundred? It is the average. That would be something I would be in favor of.
And on their financial statement, sixteen hundred and eighty-seven dollars.
Uh, yeah, this years was sixteen hundred and thirty-six sixty-two. Last year was seventeen hundred and forty-nine sixty-six. So it averaged seventeen hundred.
In this grant, we have, it's eight thousand dollars budget total to, for grant funding for this?
No, no, this, this is per line item as, uh, as per year. So you basically allot that number and then we budget for it accordingly. So, uh, uh, the historical society at twenty-three thousand, as we know, not all councils know that, but about every three years, uh, they get their casino as well and don't ask us for playing for a year in, here and there. Uh, the Chamber of Commerce hasn't been running to capacity, so they haven't asked for their funding. Uh, we just amended this policy to make sure that everybody was on an even playing field for, uh, providing financial statements, those sort of things.
Community in blooms don't usually take very much lately either.
They're, uh, they've been back and forth depending, but they have been, uh, lately. The daycare society, uh, that's, that grant started when they were in dire straits, uh, being able to keep their doors open.
And there was a comment made earlier that this financial statement included their sixty-three thousand dollars in casino. It doesn't.
No.
There is seven thousand eight hundred and ninety-six dollars in cash present for their casinos. So this financial statement was prior to.
Yeah, it, it's in their accounts.
It's, it's in their account budget, but.
Yeah.
There were a few bugaboo's, I'll call it, in the financials.
Yeah, yes. And their executive had mentioned that they, they were doing it. They're actually asking Diane to, uh, uh, cause there was a couple things that didn't line up.
Yeah.
So they're asking for that to be amended. I know, I, I don't even know if their, uh, if their bu- annual budget is, is approved yet or if it's just been reshooted by their executive. Because like you know, there was some questions in there about, uh, the, the raffle. It showed expense, but not some of those things. And I think they're still working that way for those.
Cole?
Well, I'd like to make the recommendation that council directs administration to amend policy F dash zero six recurring grants to organizations to include a grant of, what did you want it to be?
Seventeen hundred.
Seventeen hundred and forty-nine?
What, just seventeen hundred? Four, you.
Yeah, let's just see, seven, seventeen hundred dollars to the Vulcan Curling Club as presented.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. Any discussion on Cole's motion? Go ahead.
I, I agree with Cole's motion, but I just pointed out about the number, like, should it be? You know how many civil politicians are in their taxes, right? They go up and down. Should we, if it's gonna be reoccurring, do you wanna keep it at seventeen hundred? Or should we just make it like an even?
No, it, it, it's not reoccurring. It comes from the reoccurring grants to organizations. Every organization has to apply for it every year. It just comes out of that category.
Okay.
So, no, that's okay.
And you budget according to the policy. That's what we budget for as these requests come in.
So it, it goes up and down.
So next year it can be different.
So it would be added to this list. If you don't wanna change that number year to year, you could put, like, what we do for the Legion at two thousand dollars. And, you know, it gets reviewed as part of the budget review process. Uh, I think, uh, while you actually made the motion a couple of years ago when we were, uh, uh, in different financial position, where we actually took every one of those in that category and brought it at ten percent. So if you do make it an even number.
Does not.
Yeah. Okay, I withdraw.
That's fine. Okay, so we have a motion for any more discussion on that? Okay, so Cole's motion to approve this at seventeen hundred dollars. It's, uh, any question on Cole's motion? None? I'll call a question in the favor? Opposed? This carried. Okay, Vulcan Legion National Poppy Campaign Request.
Uh, you've all had a chance to read the reports. Pretty straightforward. Uh, they, they're doing more on their poppy campaign. So they're actually looking to engage the mayor to do presentations for the first poppy within our community and also flying the flag. We had a discussion on flag. As you know, flags in our community are kind of a, a hard thing to navigate if we're looking at moving them around, those sort of things. And because of the layout and the families that contributed to, uh, the majority of our flags, really changes what we can put on some of the poles. So we, uh, I talked to you about it from a public work standpoint. One of the biggest notes on the flags is it won't, uh, the three by six don't fit on our call poles. So it limits it to our shorter poles that we have around town. So that the flags have the actual right size for the pole.
How short are the short ones?
Uh, they're, they're the ones, we've got the tall ones on Main Street that are forty and I believe the shorter ones are thirty.
Okay.
I believe. Uh, the ones out in front of the building are bigger twenty-five. But proportionally, the flags line up properly on the, on the right pole. So it eliminated any of that, because of the size of the flag, eliminated any of the, uh, any of the tall poles. And so the suggestion was the one here at Town Office that has the town flag. That way we can still fly the Canadian flag and right up to our Remembrance Day, where we could take down the town and put up the poppy flag. One of the other suggestions that was brought forward, and I didn't get a follow-up from the Legion, is that what they were looking for a place that was very visible, something that we do for Canada Day as well, is we hang the four of the corners of Main Street. So, uh, I will, if council's supportive of that, uh, I could ask if they would provide us with four, talk to Public Works and see if we can hang those on poles, cause they won't, won't interfere with our, uh, with our Christmas decorations or anything like that. See if that's a.
There is a new flag pole going up on that corner next week.
Okay.
You, you could have asked the U-Lanes Club.
That may have had a, yeah, that may be the request in the coming years.
Okay.
Pole does go up. Uh, but that, as of right now, uh, that's the, uh, the request. I, again, I'll take it to you. I don't need a formal motion for the ones on Main Street, but if I see many heads that it's worthwhile pursuing.
Yeah, definitely.
Then I'll pursue it. If they have them, they may only get one. So if they get the one, we'll put it here at the Town Office if, uh, if council.
Just to let you know, that one in the corner, he's at twenty-five.
Okay, so it'll be a short one.
Yeah.
Good.
Um, I'd like to make the recommendation that council approves the Vulcan Nations' request to fly the poppy flag at the Town Office from October twenty-fifth to the end day of November eleventh, two thousand twenty-four, as well as the mayor's participation in support of the National Poppy Campaign.
Okay, any discussion on Barbara's motion? Hearing none, I'll call a question in the favor? This carried. Okay, and moving on to the Santa Claus Run.
So again, everybody's had a chance to read the report. Uh, this ha- happened last year, this event, and, uh, they've asked for assistance with the recreation, recreation stuff that they could take it in and, and help it, uh, grow. So, uh, right now, they, they were looking for a capacity of forty entries and they've, uh, they believe thirty-six was where they were at today. So they're now hoping that fifty will be there. Uh, they have suggested a route. Uh, it's along the walking path, uh, throughout the community, but then when it comes in on, uh, Fifth Avenue here, goes down. And then they, one of the things they're looking at is raising awareness, all the things, if people are running in, uh, in Santa Claus suits, running down the sidewalks, down, uh, down Main Street to the finish line, they thought it would have a pretty nice effect coming down, uh, down Center Street with that. So that's why that route, instead of following the traditional walking path on, uh, on this route, they've come down Main Street with that. So with that, uh, they are requesting, uh, that, uh, council approve a street closure just on First Avenue in front of Nine and the Line where they're doing the start to finish line. And that way they can host the events through the day. And that way they can, uh, host the events through the day there. As you know, we close that road quite often, temporary road closure. Uh, because it's now internal event, uh, things that they're mentioning there about works assisting with barricades, things like that. That's now just recreation asking for public works to assist them with it, so.
Judy?
I'd like to make the recommendation that council approves the Recreation Department's request for a temporary street closure of First Avenue from Center Street to First Street North on November twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, from ten AM to two-thirty PM at Santa Claus five K one block.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion on Judy's motion? Hearing none, I'll call a question in favor. Posed, this is carried. Okay, thank you. Moving on to committee reports, um, Mayers and Reeves. You can see from the September the sixth. MPC's Planning Commissions from September the tenth. And Vulcan reached no response to Elder Abuse Council, which I butchered earlier. October the ninth meeting and September the eleventh meeting. Any questions on any of those three? Jur, sorry.
I know it went to county and I know it came here, but it, did it go to the villages? Because wasn't that the motion that we had meant?
Yes, and so, so far we've only received a response from my, but all of the councils.
They have been notified.
Yeah, so absolutely.
I'd asked somebody from Champion, they hadn't heard from me yet, so I just.
Of course, they had a change in administration and Stephanie will be here today, so, or tomorrow, so hopefully.
Good, thank you.
Follow up with her.
Okay, any questions, any, any other questions on all those threes? If not, somebody wish to move, then Richard? Okay, any discussion on Richard's motion? Hearing none, I'll call a question in favor. Posed, this is carried. Okay, moving on to verbal councillor reports. Councillor.
Uh, it's the only meeting I've kind of sort of had, today at seven-thirty was the planning club meeting, so I missed that one. Otherwise, I attended, uh, the British Municipalities Conference right here last month. And I went to the pre-conference session at council's role in land use development. I thought overall it was a, it was a good conference. Uh, it was interesting to share or hear what other councils or municipalities are going through. It's a little alarming to hear some of the, uh, abuse, uh, scare attacks, scare tactics that have been used against other councillors and other areas. And it's not just in big, it's not just in the cities, but in some small towns and villages as well. I was disappointed to hear, uh, thank goodness where we're, we're at, we don't. We've seen a little bit, but not, not as much to an extent, so it's just. The big thing I got out of it was, uh, just hearing, speaking to different areas and hearing what they're going through and, uh, different scenarios and different councillors are going through. I, I thought it was quite beneficial.
Okay, any questions for them? Okay, your councillors, your devotees?
Uh, yeah, me as well. I, I went to the AMA and, um, I filmed it actually really good. I think this is the, the three years I've gone. This is when I seem to get the most out of it. It was, uh, well taught. I went up on the Tuesday and it was, there was a couple of good courses I was in on that one. Like Lyle was saying, um, good interaction with other councils and, uh, some of the business people out of the bigger city councils that had some interesting comments. Um, then I went to the, uh, Water Commission on the third, October third. Um, real good one. Um, some really good, uh, conversation and, um, trying to figure out what, uh, a gallon of water truly costs us. So we asked Kathy to do scenarios, uh, different ones of, of averages, including like the reserve cost, operating cost. And which brought up some really interesting comments. Christopher Northcott was asking, you know, he asks people for reserve money when you're not giving them where to put it, which, which made a lot of sense, you know? Um, so we just went through a few things and like that and then talked about conserving water. We went through this here and then, you know, you're asking people to conserve water, but you're in a business of selling water, you know, and, and you have to pay for that business to make a profit. And so it was actually really interesting. Tom was there and I hate to admit it, but he was quite interesting to listen to. So, um, he, you know, uh, we talked about everything, about, uh, the overall cost of everything, including the benches and everything in on this, um, administration costs and all that. Putting it in, finding out what it truly costs to make that gallon of water, breaking it down and then going from that. I think there was, what, three scenarios he was going to do? And, uh, so when we get back, and I think we're going to have another meeting here in the next couple of weeks, I think, and, uh, to go through this. And I, I, I found it quite interesting and, um, I'm kind of looking forward to see the other side of it and, uh, they were talking about, uh, all my neighbors wrecked their, uh, their system, their alarm system, and they pulled up the one tellus box. Decided to yank that out of the ground and, yeah. So anyways, they were there, fixed that the other day. And so, um, actually, so it'll be, I, until we see what the scenarios are, then we can make some, uh, some decisions on that. But it was all in all, very interesting meeting. I found it very interesting. It was, again, the old guy there was pretty good. So that's about it.
Okay, any questions for Richard? Okay, no, councillor Sanderson.
Um, I attended the AM meetings in, uh, Red Year on, I went up on the twenty-fourth for the effective meetings. That was a very, very good course and of course taken it. And, um, I think it would be good for everybody to be able to sit on this, this class. Um, very informative. Um, I took away a lot of good information, so I encourage anybody that has the time to, to take that. Um, shoulders held up, that speed meetings up too, so it was quite good. And, and like Lyle, there was two, uh, sessions that went too that was very disconcerting with the abuse going on, mainly to other people and women. And, um, it was quite shocking. I'm very happy to be living in this community where we don't have the issues that most people do. Um, the one guy, uh, from Edmonton said, it's a lot of people respond back to comments on, uh, social media, looking for a fight. And, uh, so he put it out there. I'm very happy. I'll sit down with you and, and have coffee and we can discuss your concerns. He said ninety-nine percent did, but he says of the one percent, he says, it was very interesting and it came away even better because people don't understand municipal laws. So that's, that's a huge thing. Went to Enabling Housing Choice, uh, put on by the Rural Development Network. And that was really interesting because it talked about all styles of, of housing, not, you know, attached, multi-used, rentals, retirees, newcomers, singles. So we, they realize that rural's very distinct community where we don't have the developers that want to come in here and build. So, you know, that's, that's huge for us. So it was good to hear we're not all in the same boat. I love, one of my favorite parts of the convention is listening to, oh, the right premier speak.
Yeah.
Because it's, it's positive. And, and she does a, a Q and A and, and she gives everybody a chance to ask questions. So I really enjoy that, that portion of it as well. The opposition leader, I wish they would get up and tell me what they could do for me, not just bash the party that's in leaking right now. So that's, I have a problem with that one. Um, I loved the minister dialogues.
Yeah.
Lot of good information. It was a great convention and I'm so thankful that we're allowed to go with that. So thank you to those that helped with that. October third, um, we've been having issues with Clarison Transportation. Um, August first, a grant was approved for Clarison Transportation for Vulcan to have a van and have drivers. And there's been so much stress in the office at the FCSS office and we've been, the emails going back and forth are this mind boggling. So we said, okay, we'll have a sit-down meeting with you. So, um, there was three staff from the FCSS Food Bank and, um, two directors, myself and Jamie Smith, Wendover. And we had three directors, uh, Mike Sandy and Lori Lichtman and Jasmine. She's the United Way did the grant and she's from St. Albert and she drove all the way down there. And the two people that we thought were going to be there was Sally, the one that does the Clarison Transportation. And then I don't know if this Harold, what's his name? If he's FCSS or what, but, um, they, they weren't there. So it was very disconcerting that we all made the effort for five, you know, we were there two hours and then two hours traveling. That's four hours out of our day. And then to have Mike say, well, I didn't even read the, the grant. And they didn't, they knew Howard hadn't read the grant. And so they're having a meeting on the seventeenth of October and we're hoping they sign the MOU. But it's, it's very frustrating. They've, um, alienated some potential residents to ride because Clarison Transportation gets in and instead of letting FC, the Food Bank go after it, Angie is our employee. And they, uh, it says, we went through and Don highlighted all the areas that they're coming back from the zone. It says it has to be run this way. And Jasmine, the United Way person stood up and she said, you know, Clarison, you would not have this grant if it wasn't for Vulcan. It's because of Vulcan that you have it. So it was quite frustrating. Um, we thought we got things kind of organized. We went over everything. They are not to pay our, our, um, Food Bank manager, because she's the dispatcher. And they, they want the timesheets and we said, and Jasmine said, this is all I need, is this one sheet showed us on the, her computer. And the next day we got a request for the timesheet. So they didn't, they weren't hearing what we were saying and all of them are phoning this Jasmine. And she just wants what Mike and Lori was on at that time. Mike said he would be the. So we're not sure what's going on with that yet, but if it's that stressful, they, we have one driver, we had six signed up to go work for interviews and she went and interviewed them because they didn't have their criminal checks and that. Well, don't usually get your interview first to know you're getting hired. And then the one guy that is a driver around here all the time, he came in just so upset the other day with me at the van. He says, I can't work for that organization. So, um, Angie said you'll come, you'll work for me. So I don't know how that's going to work. So, um, fingers crossed, um, that we can get this working, but right now it's, it's, is it worth, is it worth the frustration that these people are going through down there? But that's paying for half our event managers' wage. So it's kind of scary, but, um, there are some other options and other ways we can go. Maybe United Way would still support Vulcan. So that's different things we have to look for.
I think I, um, just want to kind of comment on that. Um, Healthy Aging Alberta's, who goes through United Way for distribution of the funding, um, is very, very happy with, um, the two areas they're already funding. And the funding, uh, was laid out very clearly in the agreement. So Clarison will have to adhere to that eventually if they want the funding.
It's reading the grant.
I know it is. I know. It's very explicit. So it's just a stressful time, hopefully, just until things.
Yeah, hopefully, we're really, we're really hoping. If the MOU is not signed off October seventeenth, then I think we'll have to look at a different direction. So hopefully it's signed. October seventh and eighth, I went to the ASHA South Region Meeting. Um, on the seventh, thank you for letting me go up for that, and we had the informal networking session. Uh, new thing they are trying is this networking. And unfortunately, there was not a good turnout, but it's something that they're new at trying. There was, uh, seven of us that attended and of that, um, four of them were directors. Um, one is the incoming, who they hoped would run for the vice president of one of their departments, and Kelly and myself. But boy, did we get information because it was only, and we had all those people. So it was a very, very good evening for us and other people in ourselves, so that's too bad. People didn't feel good for us. I won't tell you what we talked about. Um, the, the, um, of the meeting, uh, we had a senior housing thought leader session. We had two of them, one in the morning, one in the afternoon. They had three panels go up and boy, the questions that came out of there and, um, what's happening and, and how badly, um, housing is needed was, and what they're, what they're trying to do. There's lots of burnout. They need more support, training raises, resources, mental health support. At one complex, residents have rallied together to help support their staff to make things easier. And then the residents felt needed. So it's interesting to hear all these, all these different stories. Requisitions, they're talking about that because there's the have and have not, but the oil and the ranch lands and the solar farms and some people don't have any of that. So they're, they're struggling more. So they're wondering if the government should subsidize. So that's one thing that they're kind of looking at. Uh, rent increases are not feasible. They're wondering if they should go back to where they set the rent rates because they're just astronomical right now. Um, like I said, sad, but, um, good to hear we're not all in the same boat. We just keep, need to keep working on values and let residents feel like the lodge is their home. And we felt that maybe it was kind of getting away from, from that sometimes. So, um, um, we also had, I'll just move on here. David Williams, he came later, so he was the end. Um, to give us an update, um, they have three main things they talked about, capital maintenance, renewal items and, um, stakeholders group for AHPP. So, um, deliverables should be ready for everything by December twenty-twenty-five. So the HPP close date has been extended to October fifteenth, which was today. And Vulcan didn't have to apply, I think I told you that before, because, uh, but because we did have our updates done. And it was, I had to go back and look because I was shocked. And Jamie Smith made a motion to have the updates go to the government on May twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four. And Lori got up and advised David Williams that our updates have not yet been sent in. I was, had to keep my mouth shut, didn't I? He said to email it to him. And one of the, one of the things that they're looking at is, um, it's cut dry mostly, um, waiting lists. And we don't have a waiting list. So I got up and, and asked a question about the wait, you know, because we don't have a waiting list, but half our rooms are inside. They don't have outside windows. And Kelly said, did you hear everybody gasp? And I said, no. And she said, did you hear Lori tell you to shut up? And I said, no. But if that's a big concern is that if we don't have the waiting list. So, and David said he's aware of what's going on in Vulcan. I said, yeah, but are the three adjudicators aware of what's going on in Vulcan? Why we don't have a waiting list? So I'm hoping that David is able to relay that. Some people thought there should be a list so that you knew where you were on the government's thing because we're spending money. And if we're not, if we're down here, why are we spending there? Maybe we need to pivot and look at something different. Like maybe put more, because there is a waiting list for the self-contained in Vulcan. There's ten in our waiting list. Maybe we should pivot and do affordable housing complex. So, but we'll wait to see what happens with this AHPP and I'll find out. We got a Marcus meeting on the twenty-ninth and, um, hopefully that's got sent in. Because it will not be pretty if it doesn't get sent in. And I do have, um, tomorrow I got MPC and Thursday I got to XMS. Sorry, that was.
Oh, no problem. Any questions for Judy? Uh, thank you, councillor Burcotti.
Um, I have the Vulcan Regional Response to Elder Abuse Council on October ninth. Uh, we are having hopefully our final strategic planning session on October twenty-first. And I should hopefully come back with a new name that is not as big and long. Uh, tomorrow evening I have a library meeting. Um, I actually really enjoyed the Alberta municipalities this time. Um, I did, uh, some sessions, um, on September twenty-fifth. I did the Water Wisdom Local Contacts and Conservation Strategies, as well as Infrastructure Committee electors being marked. as well as Infrastructure Committee Electress Be Marked Update. And on September 26th, the two of you, the Unpacking APR Challenges Progress and Next Steps for Waste Management. And through conversations, I have never mentioned on my own time, over the past couple of years, I've been doing the female elected officials meetings that Tanya Thorne arranges for a lot of the female elected officials in Southern Alberta. So I have been attending usually three, sometimes four of those per year. And I will share the information with Judy. So that's all I have.
Okay. Any questions for Barbara? Thank you, Councilor Dunn.
I was unable to attend the AM conference because of work schedule. I also was unable to attend my Water Commission meeting, which Tom filled in for, which I was kind of grateful because he has a background in that as well. So that is really all I have to offer. So I'll turn it over to Tom.
Good. Any questions?
Any questions for Tom?
Okay, so, great, thank you. I went to the AM conference too and it was good. I think that anybody that goes, that has an opportunity to see the advantages of wearing uniforms sees it. I mean, we've got again, a lot of press and a lot of different municipalities that participate and came over, you know, high fives and kudos. And so I think that's always, always good to have. And then just the networking that we do amongst ourselves. I mean, I know that it's nice to go and separate, go to other tables and network with them. But I think sometimes networking amongst ourselves is a great, huge advantage too. So the, one thing that came out of there that, that, you know, we want to look forward to in the future is again, how we portray ourselves as a community at the event. Because like even the, at the trade show, a lot of the booths, you know, wanted our photos taken. And a high five to our swimming pool contractor that did our swimming pool. Had in the background, our swimming pool as their booth. And we got photos with them and they're really quite excited about, you know, promoting how well our swimming pool has turned out. You know, I think he said that they didn't do one in Alberta this year, but they did six or eight. There were six, I think, was in Manitoba and Saskatchewan, a couple of small ones and a couple of big ones. So they're trying to stay in the four and six a year in that scenario. But anyway, it was kind of neat to see our swimming pool there and highlight it. I had a SEWA executive meeting to discuss what was going to be discussed at our annual, at our board meeting. And we weren't able to get the three preferred contractors to submit and come to a date that was close enough to each other. So we postponed the major board meeting to go just by Zoom instead of going to meet in person. And so we have arranged for the three contractors to, two of them will be this week and one will be on Monday to give their presentation to the board. And we're hoping that, unfortunately, that's the disappointing thing about sometimes Zoom too is you really don't know who's going to show up. You know, they send out all these invites and there's, you know, the five or six always come back and say, yeah, I can attend or I'll be there. And the other ones, you don't have a foggy as whether they're going to show up or they're not. So, you know, hopefully we've got a good turnout so they can ask the questions themselves. We have board members that, you know, really want to, you know, be on the cusp of all the information available. And yet some of them don't tend when you try and arrange it. And it's really hard to try and get some of these companies to, you know, come to the table. You know, one's from Australia, one, you know, is from Vancouver and then one's from Edmonton. And one, you know, the one from Australia is bringing in somebody from Germany to discuss it. And then the one from, and that's one from Vancouver too. So there'll be the three from Vancouver, Germany and Australia will be on the Zoom meeting. And then the other ones from, has a facility in Nova Scotia. So, you know, trying to arrange the timing for all of them to be able to come, this is a challenge. I did attend the Water Commission and thank you Cole for allowing me to be there at your behalf. And hopefully I didn't beat up anybody too badly or not. But, you know, I think Richard highlighted the things that we have talked about in the past of, you know, trying to take these debentures and come up with a full movement. So again, you know, a price of water is X amount of dollars per cubic meter and that's it, you know, it alls in, you know. And Christopher Northcott's comments about, you know, making sure you have reserves. Because there are some municipalities that take reserves or, and again, you know, I always pick on the bean counters. They always want you to have more in reserves than what most municipalities come forward. And why have it if you don't have an goal for it? Why create all these huge? So I think Christopher's point is to come up and come up with some plans of why you need, whether it's an operating reserve or a capital reserve. And again, the bean counters have really gone after the administration and said, you know, in 25 years when this plant is done, you should have enough in reserves to replace it. And that's not a reality. I mean, how can you, you know, have six or 10 million dollars just in reserves so you can replace something? Is on the taxpayers of today's or the ratepayers of today's. So anyway, I think that the Water Commission will have some great information to come back to their members and hopefully they can move forward. Again, went to Mayor's Reeves. The lady from, that was there representing AM, they talked about, there's a huge discussion about the unresolved requests for ASHA's delegation to vote on the resolutions. And so they're going to try and change their format so that, you know, they either give themselves more time or, or, you know, create more time to do the resolutions so that all of the resolutions, not just the ones that got there. You know, so I mean, they went to all that work, why not? The other one, at the Mayor's Reeves, unfortunately Jason wasn't there. He was away in the state, I think again, on an insurance conference thing. He's really quite heavy in the RMA on the insurance side, so he goes away quite a bit, but he wasn't there. There were some questions and comments made to, Nathan Newdorff was the only MLA that was there. He came late, but he came and I really quite enjoy Nathan and Grant Hunter. I wish our MLA and, you know, a couple of us made comment about, you know, that it's too bad that all of our MLAs can't attend some of these things and show their respect for what we try to do, you know, there. And, but Nathan is, you know, really pushed. And again, you know, he says, you know, it's really hard sometimes, you know. He talked about, you know, our premier does make comments sometimes that does shock the rest of their cabinet. And, you know, their cabinet goes, whoa, you know, now what do we need to do? But he says it's good, sometimes it's good to look outside the box and see what we can do. So, but he was good. There was 22 of us on there and there was 12 online, so not as big online, but there was a good. Other than that, like I said, I had a few discussions with ratepayers on proposals for, for, you know, calming and data information. And I think, you know, Barb's comment made that we need to kind of look at giving some pricing on data collection information, how we collect it, you know, who we collect it from. So I think that'll be a huge asset to be able to satisfy some of those other questions asked. Well, what about my block, you know, or my community or my part of the community? Why is it referred to waste out? I don't know. So I think that's, you know, what the decision we made, I'll move that forward. I did go to the volleyball game the other day, but I didn't stay for the whole thing. It was interesting seeing how many people came out. It was a good crowd. And it's kind of a neat fundraiser for the Kid Sports, which is another great organization that we have in our community that is trying to offer things to our younger generation that, you know, needs to support and help.
They said 300.
What was it? Again, I didn't stay to the end. I was sitting in a bad spot and there was a group of youth that decided to use the features as a runway. And they're going up and down and I was really, you know, and I couldn't handle it. I had to finally leave, which is too bad because I would like to have seen more of the game. The games were good. Yeah, I really quite enjoyed watching. I really enjoyed watching volleyball too, you know, it's at that caliber, you know, it's unbelievable, especially the guys. It's what they can do, you know, the diving and what they put their bodies through. But anyway, it was a, it was a good event. So I appreciated whoever did the organization of that and I think that's nice to see. So anyway, that's pretty well it for me. I've got, like I said, three SEWA events this week. And I was maybe thinking of going to MPC tomorrow just to hear a little bit more on a couple of the things that are coming up. Nothing for me?
I just make the, one thing about us wearing our uniforms and it was nice to have Kim in the uniform this time too. But in the pictures, you know where we are. And when you go to get your meal, you know where our group is just for the red and there we are. So I, and we can't pay for that kind of.
I said that to somebody, I guess, I love uniforms. I said, the only reason we wear them is because we could find each other in that hall.
But I, you know, we got up there twice and poor Tom getting up and down because everybody wanted to picture him or try to eat. And another thing I did, was pleased to hear that Joseph Shaw was lobbying for a new lodge here. Because David said that he was aware of what we've done and different things. Because he says Joseph had been calling them quite a bit and pushing for us. So I was happy to hear that.
That's awesome. That's great. Okay, anything else? If not, somebody wished to move or Richard? Any discussion on Richard's motion? Now, question on the favor, closed. So now Mr. Eric Carey, move on to the administration management report.
Well, I had a chance to read it. I don't imagine there's any questions unless it's on the first one.
Okay, move on.
Okay, we'll go on to the CAO report. Three weeks in between the meetings, so there's lots of. And so been working on speed coming. They've been doing quite a bit of research into consumer price index and wage comparisons for. It's quite, it was nice, we received the Alberta Municipalities does a salary survey every year that we participate in. So we got a copy of that and they actually broke it down into communities under 5,000 this year at Summer Village. So there's quite a few good comparables for that for this year that I've been using for the. AMSC, you guys, I'm sure, heard some of the presentations at the AMA convention, sorry, Alberta Municipalities Convention. And I've been having conversations with AMPRO because they broker for us on top of AMSC. And now it's looking like we're duplicating service. So through conversation with AMSC and just making counsel where we'll probably be getting our contract with AMPRO for that if they're duplicating. So AMPRO has more of a conservative hedging program. But AMSC also gives us the usual discounts on their stuff. So I've been in conversation with Karen, told her I would let her know probably tomorrow. And our contract with AMPRO has been just on every, every year. So we can get out of it at any time. Put together your information for our map review. For those that don't know, that's the municipal accountability program. They randomly been selected. Now, this is our second time at this, so Karen and I had most of the information together. The initial fellow that called us to put this thing together has moved on to another job. So they rescheduled for the 14th of November to review it. I indicated that this was more of a practice for them than us. Nobody's changed here internally. We haven't changed anything from our last review. So hopefully it'll be very quick and a simple process this time. Other than Karen's been doing a tremendous amount of work putting the documents together for it. There's a lot of information that they go through. So Karen's for the council chambers.
Thank you.
Hopefully will last longer than I do. The FCS, I've been working with the director. They had some questions on some possible renovations to the building and just clarifying some of the stuff on the parking. They had concerns about a truck turning in that lane. And she was surprised to hear that they weren't supposed to be parking the staff vehicles in front of the building. So that hopefully clarified that and provided her with the information where that is. We've got a new lease out at the airport, which I was able to sign the lease agreement for on behalf of the town. Met with the curling club president to review funding requests. We public works received their new vehicle, so I did the registration on that. Interesting one, met with a potential developer and a contractor interested in the future build development. So, and basically what we did is basically gave them some background of the community, that sort of thing. And then wanted Angie to follow up. Contractor, probably not as exciting as the developer. The developer is somebody semi-local that has developed quite a few affordable housing in the United States. So, and the contractor was Johnny. And that stemmed from that conversation from the, from the open house they had. The assistant, the neighboring CAOs, some questions on camera budgets. FCS, one was inquiring whether the town would consider hiring out our public works group and do some of that work. A little hard to do in a different community, so kind of worked our way through that. And then emergency management stuff. The CAO from Champion is actually going to come up tomorrow. We're going to review some budget stuff, which will work out really well because our auditors are also here this week as well. So they're set up in the office next to us here. Community members inquiries, because it was nice out in the campground. And of course, given the housing situation, it's lots of questions about what we can do with camping and that. And then some infrastructure questions. Councils, just the normal questions throughout the thing. I was on October 1st for vacation day. Attended the Futureville Investor Meeting at the Ginsman Room, Alberta Municipalities Convention. Apologize, I only had one uniform and the first day was fairly warm, so I did not wear it the second day. Now, speaking to the value of that, I got trashed probably more than any of you for not having one. So for the second day, so that was, that was good. And then I attended the regional emergency management date and see meeting. Will, I speak to it on, and they've reviewed budget. Our contributions for next year are actually going to be going down just a little bit still for us in the $2,500 to $3,000 range. And majority of the funding that we went towards, it was towards training. And they did a slight amendment to, well, not a slight amendment, they did an amendment to the emergency management plan for when they do evacuations on how they do reentry. And so one of the things that was considered is, especially in the rural for the county, is care for livestock, things like that. And how do you let guys back in during an emergency to care for livestock, those sort of things. And so they're using a placard system that was suggested by the province. And they're wording for the emergency management plan. Another community had just finished it, but had, it was Addison that did the reentry plan. So they were able to just use the documentation to update our plan. So that was approved from the community there this one month. Hopefully that does justice to Will's attendance to that meeting. And that's it for me.
Any questions for Ken? Okay, if not, move on to the developers. Okay, any questions on that one? Okay, if not, we'll on to Public Works. Okay, no questions on this too, so move on to the Community Services.
We got lots of feedback from the posts that Chris posted, people from all over the world, the different continents, and lots, lots of positive feedback online for that one.
Oh, good, good. And also the video, the recreational video that out looks fantastic. Hopefully we get footage of Santa Claus running.
Maybe, yeah, they turned out really well. They did four videos total, like they sent them all up to you. They just been placing them in different places when they can, and getting really good feedback.
Waiting for mine.
Your residual for being in the.
You want to get higher up on the credits, do you?
You didn't get a hold of Google because I found you on Google Earth the other day walking downtown too.
Oh, did you?
Yes, walking your dog. I won't tell you where at on a, in a public meeting, but.
I walked everywhere.
Okay, any questions on Chris's? Okay, move on to Bylaw.
So he's been busy. Yeah, and with splitting his time with recreation as, of course, our fall programming and whatnot, he's been extremely busy. And, yeah, we, the unsite lease, he had pretty good response with that, a few that we didn't. He has moved forward with contracting service that we're going to be invoicing and or putting in on the taxes. One of the things going through that progress, process, every Bylaw slash peace officer we've had has taken a different process with that. And after talking to Channing for that this year, his approach next year is going to be a little bit different than this year. She gave a little bit more time than you normally would for cleanup and realizing that people just ignore it. So it's going to be a spring letter and a cleanup and a fall letter and cleanups.
Okay, any question on Channing's? Okay, move on to the Fire Services Manager's report.
I have a stupid question, I'm sure I'm going to be like an idiot if I had. What's MVC stand for? Okay, I knew it would be something, something like that. Life of me a government.
Just really happy that at this point in my career, I can remember most of the acronyms. There's no, there's no shame in asking what an acronym means because we have so many of them.
Okay, any questions on this one here? All righty, if not, we looking for a motion to, okay, Barbara? Any discussion on Barbara's motion? Mary and Dan, call the questions in favor, closed, seeing none. So, Karen, one more motion. Oh, Cole, jeez.
Oh, she's a jerk. Listen, we're.
Thank you, Cole. Any discussion on Cole's motion to adjourn? Mary and Dan, we'll call the question, those in favor, closed. Thank you very much, everybody.